We'll call meeting order. We're going to have flag pledge at this time. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of religion. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Turn on your mic please. At this time we're going to ask the clerk to make the roll call.
Dale Ames.
Here.
Kelly Carroll, here. Carol Jorgensen.
Here.
Barry Wagner.
Here.
Jason Alders.
Here.
Rob Schiller.
Yep.
Jeff Pilon.
Here.
Liz Stockman.
Here.
Okay, well, ask the clerk to read the meeting policy.
Please register your attendance on the sign-in sheet on the back table. Copies of the agenda are also available on the back table. The agenda as printed or amended will be followed, so all necessary and needed actions by the Planning and Zoning Commission will be addressed. The agenda may be amended by proper motion. Comments from the floor are welcome during public hearings. Those wishing to comment must register on the floor comments sheet on the back table. When comments from the floor are made, individuals must first be recognized by the chairman, clearly state your name and address for the record, allow no more than three minutes to state your comments or concerns. Please turn all cell phones off or on silent. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to either approve or amend the meeting agenda of November 5th, 2020. Somebody like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Alders made the motion. Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay. Commissioner Carroll seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we'll open the public hearing. The public hearing has to do with Swanson and Sonnaby Internet Internance Permit variance in 5340199th Avenue Northwest, and the pin number is 24-33-25-34-002. Reuse of Burns Auto Site for use auto sales. And a 10-foot, .2-foot variance has been requested from 100-foot buffer requirement. And at this time, we're going to ask the clerk of all publications and descriptions, the property in the mail.
Yes.
Okay. Then we're going to ask the planner at this time, if she present what she has there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Burns Auto is located on Highway 47 at 199th Avenue. The access points, there's currently three driveways that go onto 199th Avenue. As most of you know, it's been an auto sale site for many years. So with the proposal to sell the property, the potential buyer is required to come in for a new interim use permit because those are not transferable to the new buyer. So that gives the city an opportunity to review the site again. So here's a regional map of the area, and then also a site-specific map. This is an older one. If you've driven by recently, you'll see that most of the cars have now been removed. So this is the proposed site plan that's been revised from the original Burns concept, Burns Auto concept. So the gray shaded areas are the areas that are paved. We're calling this the North Building and the South Building, which have been commercially used since before 2016. And the house is proposed to be converted to offices. And thus, the variance request is for this setback here to the Western Lot Line. All commercial uses are required to have 100-foot buffer. And there's currently an 80, what are we at, 89.8 setback here. So that's the 10-foot, .2 variance request. So what Mr. Sontsibi would like to do is set up seven offices in the South Building, 10 in this Northerly Building, and then seven offices in the House. And the driveway to the home would be removed so that the cars don't park there. And we're trying to keep the cars as far back from the residential areas as we can. So the, there would be a sidewalk that goes to the house from this proposed parking area here. This is already a gravel parking area, and the driveway is in existence. So he would just be paving another 12 stalls on this side, and then another four here for access to these buildings. So the property is zoned commercial. These are, auto sales is an interim use within this district. So it is an appropriate request for the current zoning. And there are a list of conditions, and we can go through those later. But we'd like to be very specific in establishing conditions so that if anything that we set forth or the council sets forth can be enforced in later years. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I'll let you open the public hearing, and people can voice their... I do have some architectural plans. Just give them to Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if the neighborhood would like to see these. It's just showing the interior changes and how the exterior facades of the North and South Building. The part that faces 47 will be upgraded. It has to be 65% grade A product, which is either windows, brick, or stone. So this would be the Southerly Building. This is the interior of the Northerly Building with the 10 offices. And each, each building would have a restroom. This is the house. This is the house, proposed layout with seven offices. And this is the Northerly Building with the combination of siding and brick. We do need to increase the amount of brick on this building slightly. And then the house is satisfactory as a stucco finish under our building material requirements. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'd like the applicant, he's here, does he have anything comments he'd like to make?
Yes.
No, 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 the applicant.
The applicant.
They'll open the public hearing in a moment. Mr. Sontsibi or Ms. Swanson, do you want to say anything?
Oh, I'm pretty much covered it all.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. Now, I do have a lot of floor items here. Now, being that this is a public hearing, if these have anything to do with what you'd like to say at the public hearing, you're welcome to say it. Is there anybody on here that would like to make comments from the floor?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
They signed up because they want to speak. That's what that list is.
Oh, okay.
So you should call on them and have them come to you.
Okay, okay. So we'll open the public hearing for comments from the people from the floor. If they have anything that they'd like to say at this time? Go ahead. Give up your name, give us name.
We're right next door.
Okay, name and address.
I'm Eric Day, property owner of 5380 199th Avenue Northwest, West, which is a property with a shared property line to the auto sale lot. I'm here to deny your request to propose of moving the commercial property line towards my property. Some of my main reasons for denying this proposal is that the lot runoff and floor drains and auto garages ran into the drain tile that runs directly to our shared property corner. As a licensed plumber, I know that this is not the proper way to deal with wastewater runoff from a car lot or auto business and is not to stay plumbing code, and has already affected my property water table in my backyard. This runoff feeds across my property into my pond, from my pond across Lennox's property to Ford Brook. As the water table in Nalthen rises, this will present a larger problem in the future to my property and others, all the way to Ford Brook and beyond. This wastewater contains oil antifreeze from cars on the car lot and goes directly to my property. The car lot has presented a lot of other problems over the years also. Although the auto salesman claimed to tell buyers to not test drive cars down 199th, it was a constant of cars test driving up and down, driving down our dirt road causing potholes, chatter bumps, and done so bad we wouldn't open the windows on that side of our house. We would complain, but test drives down 199th continued. The light pollution caused by all the light poles is a constant problem for us and our neighbors. Turning the house into offices will make this problem worse with the constant car traffic in and out. This car lot lowers my property value, and making it larger will only make things worse for me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Second round, there's an original builder there that built the road. That drainage has been a problem. There is no septic sewer for any bathroom, not even one, let alone the ones you're talking about. And we're just toeing against this old car lot thing in the first place. I signed up for 58 cars for Bob 20-plus years ago, and turned it into this nightmare, this used car lot which does nothing but collect. The downside of society, let's just put it that way. And my neighbors also have other evidence of everything going on in the neighborhood since all this riffraff moved in. And we don't want it in any way, shape, or form. And our legal thing is drainage, and we're not succeeding any useman at all on the house becoming commercial property.
Thank you.
Can you provide some clarity, Liz?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there is no proposal to move the lot line. The lot line is staying right where it is.
I'm worried about the lot owners. I'm a merchant right next to us. And they don't have drainage for one toilet, let alone 10 in this building and 6 in that building. How many people does a tech or self use cars? Give me a break.
But you do want...
There's obviously something else going on here. There's more undesertables moving into our neighborhood, and that's what it adds up to. You should re-bond between the lines.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the property is zoned commercial. Like I said, it is an allowed use under the interim use permit provisions. So let's continue, please, with the public hearing.
Okay. Somebody else like to make comments?
Alright, we moved out here back in 96, as people know.
Name and address.
My name is Ron Loesendorf. I live in 5477199. We've been out here since 96, have owned property since 94. You know, and none of us on this, on that old street agreed with and wanted this property to be a car lot, even back when you guys first proposed it. You know, none of you probably want a car lot next to you. And all it did was create problems. Cars coming and going all over the night. Matter of fact, it gets to the point to where, you know, and nobody told me to put a precinct there. And I've got proof right here, here's the police reports. And that's just from that address. That's not including the neighbor next door who's had his car stolen, his truck crashed back, and all the other neighbors that I've talked to and the whole northeast portion of Nalthen who had their homes broken into, their shops broken into, and other things stolen, that they really can't report to the cops because it isn't worth them reporting to their insurance companies because it isn't, because they got $2,000 valuables on their insurance. And that's all it's done, bring that in. I see the cops there all the time, people coming and going like crazy, and that's from one dealer. You're going to bring 25 others in there? You just don't think we're going to have more problems? All you're going to do is going to force, force all of us people who've been here for years to leave. And I've talked to other people all the way around this area, and they said the same thing. You know, it's a shame. It's a shame what you're going to do to this community.
Shooting holes in the side of my garage.
Thank you. Commissioner. Anybody else like to make comment? Name and address, please.
My name is Jill Libby, 5360 Old Viking Boulevard. And, you know, I'm just asking, what does, can anyone tell us what it's going to take us to absolutely stop this from happening? What do we need to do? Can you tell us that? Because we don't want, nobody wants it. We just want to know what we can, what we're going to have to do to stop it. Is there anybody here that can tell us that exactly?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to comment?
Yes, go ahead.
So auto sales is allowed as an interim use within our commercial zoning, okay? It's already zoned commercial.
Yeah, but you didn't operate by any other zoning.
So we have to a lawyer ourselves, as a community? Okay, that's...
No, what we say doesn't mean nothing.
No, I'm not sure yet. So what that means is that, you know, this isn't a recommending body, but the city council can put conditions on this permit to, you know, for the way it's maintained, the way it's operated, the screening, you know.
Well, so far the conditions have maintained their, that's pretty lawful, but...
The septic and drain field, that's standard for anything.
How can you have that many...
You want to have that in your restroom instead of kissing in my yard?
Hey, excuse me, but she has the floor right now.
No, he is valid. I cannot see. I just put a septic in a cabin. Do you know how much I have to go through to get that septic in for 30 people? And you're talking about, how many offices and how many people could potentially be in that building? And Ford Brook is there. This is like an EPA thing, I think. I mean, the runoff with the, with the concrete, the asphalt, that's pretty... I mean, it's obvious that's where it's going. It's going to their property, and that's going to Ford Brook. I, I think, it's not okay.
You're leaving out the 1930 WPA drain tile that's going through all that property down to Ford Brook. And Bob piped the garage and his bathroom in his garage right directly into that 1930 strain tile that comes right out into my pond.
We have a leaky pond.
No wrestling. Pipe it in the yard.
They had, they had 50 cars there that were probably, you know, probably worse off than anything we've ever had in our yard. I mean, I guess, I mean, I'm sorry, but this is, this is actually ridiculous. But I mean, that's all I have to say. If it's going to take a lawyer to do this, well then, you know, I mean, I guess we'll have to look into that.
I mean, should there be this environmental impact study done on this?
So would you like me to...
Go ahead.
...or should I wait till the end? What, how would you like to handle the public hearing?
Well, let's, let's go, let the next person come up and make comment.
My name is James J. Hill. I live at 5499 199th Avenue Northwest. And I'm here to ask that you look at this from a different standpoint. Every one of the fields that are east of us drain down into that block. My engineering background tells me that all these, what we need to do, and what we will do, is we will test our wells, find out if any contamination starts coming through to, from your development, and then compare our lawyers to the lawsuit against DePoe's. This is what we can do. And that will be a promise, not a threat. Because we are not going to allow, there's half a dozen drain field tile coming through and stopping right at my neighbor's place and destroying water, and we quickly send it down to the brook to set wood and trees. And I have experience, and that's my background. I'm nationally, internationally known with my field in culverts and drainage structures. And I find it very disturbing that my neighbors have got to put up with this, what I call terrible design features. And another thing, you supposedly handled the water, but in the winter, you pushed the snow across the road illegally from that lot. And that causes water to run down my street, and then causes our neighbor problems too. The crews now they're pushed off of the, in the snow, and come down the road twice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Somebody else like to make comment?
My well probably already taking... I've got the drunk tile that's coming out.
It's all I am offering, so no one.
There are enough little volcanoes that we can't rain.
Give you, give you a name, name and address.
Troy Johnson, 5430199. So every time we end up with a large rainstorm, the WPA drain field ends at the end, down by 199th and the circle down there. There's oil slime on top of the water that's sitting there. And that's on my side, not on your side. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of oil in that water that comes through that drain tile. Are you aware of that?
No, I'm not aware of it today.
You look, you've got a blind stare on your face. I'm just wondering if you, you know what I'm talking about.
I got oil drains down to the drain, comes down through the drains, just on mine too. It streaks oil, it's been there for years.
Well, I'm not real happy with the oil consumption.
I can show you where it flows.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone else like to make comment?
Yeah, one's in here, too.
I can't speak as intelligently about those things as my neighbors. I do stand with them.
Give you a name and...
Yeah, I'm Joe Hanson, 5460 199th Avenue. Again, I stand by my neighbors. I'm curious. And actually, Ms. Swanson, you probably want to get rid of the property at this point, and they're trying to make the deal and run a business. Does this impact you at all? Does this, does this impact your willingness to, to seal this deal and then go through? Hearing how the neighbors feel about it. Also, I'm just not speaking.
I guess I never knew all these problems were happening.
Who are you supposed to say? What?
I never knew all these problems were happening.
Understandable, yeah.
But there is a drainage that you're talking about, that whole field, all that drains right through there.
Right.
I mean, I wouldn't think it's all that problematic.
Not a car lot.
Right. I think a lot nastier stuff will come in. And we're not going to be doing a repair to cars. I would be there if it's used cars that were something, we run into an off-road, off-road truck, put motors and drainage and change it all, that's, that's what we have to do.
Right. You're going to be present on the site every day, all day?
Every other day, every hour.
And you don't need to have a little pot line? I'm curious, because the descriptions of what happens, like people parking in the cul-de-sac to check out bombers, people just loading and loading, cleaning their cars on the street. I've got young children, I'd like them to be able to play in our yard without worrying that some stranger from the city has come up and is parking the cul-de-sac and, you know, right? Like, the odds of something happening are slim. But if it did, I sure would stop a lot. And it's not what I expected when I moved in. When I moved in four years ago, I'm the earliest neighbor, the most recent neighbor in the area. And I'm not going to lie, seeing that car dealership there made me reconsider buying the property. It made me offer less on the property overall. It does, I mean, I appreciate there'll be improvements maybe to the property, but, I mean, overall, it's a business investment. You don't live there. And you may have probably expected me to move in, I understand you want to get rid of that. I totally get that, right? And ultimately, it doesn't sound like we really have a say in it. You zoned your residential, I think, 15 years ago, or commercial 10, 15 years ago. It sounds like we need to work to change that and get that back to a residential zoning, or work on finding somebody who wants to buy and move in as opposed to turn it into a business. And so I don't know if that changes your assessment. I mean, we're really pushing to change this...
You know, it should have been business, so there are...
But I'm not trying to read you. Like, I mean...
Why don't you buy it? Why don't you buy it?
I know. It'd be nice to have money to do these things, but I wish, I wish I could have worked on that a lot of the time.
Address, address us, you don't have to address them.
My question was, can we do anything about the commercial zoning? How do we go about, you seem very knowledgeable, by the way. I appreciate your, your help and knowledge. Can we do something about the zoning? And you didn't get to finish about the special permit. Somebody has to sign this to say it can be a car dealership? How do we tell, who can we convince?
Let's finish the public, let's finish the comments, and then I'll try to answer all the questions because they're all kind of interclined together. Is that okay?
Yeah, could we ask more questions later too, if we follow up while you're...
Yeah, I think it's related, you know, let's, is there anyone else?
Right, I don't mean I don't want to bring them on, but if we have a question about something to say, we'll talk to him.
Okay, thank, thank you. Somebody else like to come up?
I've got one more comment.
You've already made, you've already been up once.
Yeah, but I wouldn't make a comment of all the way. That lighting was ridiculous. It was repeatedly brought up, but I mean, the whole neighborhood glows. I mean, you can't see the stars. It's, you know, you know, either, the lighting needs to be severely restricted because it just, it blankets the whole neighborhood.
Shadows in your house on all sides.
Is there any, somebody else like to make comment to this?
Eric Libby, 5360 Old Viking Boulevard. When we had a meeting for the special use permit back when Bob was fine, or when I brought up the night sky lighting as a point that I was concerned about. I like the stars and things like that. And Bob assured me that they really leave the lights off at night because he claimed that they had less stuff at night with the lights off than when they're on. And so he said, probably even the records aren't there. So that kind of dismissed my point that time years ago. But what I'm really getting at is that, obviously, the lights have been left on at night for years, and no action has ever taken with all these group supports that have happened. It shows that the place has been out of control for a long time, and no one has any, you know, grip on the situation with it. So, you know, maybe the situation would be different in this situation, but we have no faith. We have no reason to think that it would be in control or in different going forward and possibly worse because we're talking to a lot more people, you know? So I just wanted to point out, it has not been on, it has not been in control in the past. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do you have any records or proof that any of them wastewater for the lot or anything has been inspected or anything? Do you have any records of any inspections?
We're going to, we're going to address this later. We just want comments now from...
Don't forget about the 9WPA drain tiles.
Anybody else out here want to make comments? If not, we got any discussion here on the planning and zoning? Because our planner's going to address some of these things later. But just to let you know, this, this zone be commercial. This whole area is zoned to be commercial. So...
If you do the proper...
Yeah. Is there, is there any comments from the, any comments from planning and zoning here, any questions they have?
I'd like to hear Liz's comments on this.
Okay. If not, we'll let, we'll let our planner, we'll let our planner address some of these things right now.
Okay, it is, to verify, it is commercially zoned. We cannot, as a city, decide what goes in there. I mean, just because we may want a different use in there, if this commercial request meets the conditions of zoning approval and the city council can establish or attach conditions to that request to try to satisfy their, you know, your concerns and their concerns. Admittedly, we, we did have complaints over the years. I have been out there personally at least five or six times with, you know, the number of cars, the inoperable cars. I tried to work with those people. It was, it was a difficult situation.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, the planners have got the floor, she's making comments.
We realize that the, possibly the height of those lights was part of the problem. The way that those were angled is the problem. We're going to talk about some different lighting there. We can discuss if here, you know, we could, as a city, put... Uh, we can discuss if here, you know, we could, as a city, put limits on when those lights are on or off. Um, they can have, uh, hours of operation. We can require the applicant to put a gate in, you know, there's, there's many different things we can do to try to, um, address your concerns.
What about sewer and water? You must have a say.
Wait a minute, she, she's got the floor, she's speaking.
In two thousand sixteen, when the Swansons spent thousands of dollars, they had to, when they paved that parking lot, they built a stormwater pond. Yeah, they did. It's there.
It, it's just ripped crap on top of the clay.
It was reviewed by.
Still, I'm sure the drains, uh, right through my, uh, for you and my neighbor. All the way down to Ford Brook.
It was reviewed and approved.
Hey, wait a minute. Let's have order here now. Go ahead.
It was reviewed and approved by the city engineer. They met the state requirements for drainage and rock, just like any other parking lot you see down in Ramsey or anywhere else. They spent the money, they were required to do that. Um, and if, you know, obviously we don't want inoperable, unoperable or unlicensed vehicles sitting there, that is one of the conditions that is listed in the findings tonight for them, for their consideration. Uh, I cannot address police reports, I haven't seen those. Um, the septic systems, they will be required to have compliance inspections if they make changes to the buildings. Those all go to the building official and they have to have appropriate septic systems. If what's there, you know, based on the request for more offices does not meet that requirement, then they will have to amend the, the site and have a design, have it installed, inspected and everything. So please don't worry about the septic part of it, cause that will be a requirement. Um, did I forget anything here? Let's see. So, you know, like I said, about this drainage, we know that there's a lot of water coming under forty-seven and across. And that was all reviewed by the city. Now, the requirement is, um, you know, the new buyer will be required to maintain that stormwater pond. And he's adding only about a thousand, um, square feet of asphalt there in, on what was impervious surface already, which is gravel. So he's not required to make any changes, but like I said, he, it all needs to flow into that pond, that pond is designed to collect the stormwater before it's released out into the natural wetlands. There's pond. All right, Mr. Chair, what, uh, you may.
Certainly, I have one quick question. If, if they don't comply with the requirement, do you totally ask the, the special use permit? Can you shut them down?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Because it was, it didn't get shut down before when they're pouring, pouring gallons of water on the parking lot and into the, you know, the water drainage system. Go take a soil sample, see how much oil is in there. Really, go do that.
Yeah, the contamination of that. And you wanna put offices in there with bathrooms in them? There's no mountain systems that they drain field for that.
Well, they have to be in compliance.
Well, they don't have that. And if he can't afford his own driveway approach, I don't know why he's gonna afford mountain system.
That's a different, that's a different topic, driveway, okay? Yes, sir.
One more question. This is fat clay, meaning it's clay holes are beyond belief. You're building a cell deep and it's gonna run downhill towards all of us. Now that, how are you going to keep the fat clay from holding that fat material it's getting from these cars and that from getting to us? There is poor planning there. That is the worst I've seen as an engineer in my life.
Okay, well, I can't comment on that, I'm not an engineer.
I am, and I find it very desirable to see that you are not planning it correctly. And it's one of the reasons, like I said before, you will just oh well, oh well contaminate the city will suffer a huge financial loss.
Well, we want, we want them and everybody else to be in compliance with the state requirements. So yes, all, the runoff from the parking lot was designed to go into the pond. The pond collects the.
But does, sir, is the material beneath the pond, what type of materials is it?
I have no offhand, sir.
Is that right? And that's what you're trying to try, it's poor material for holding the water, keeping it there. It takes a hundred years for the water to reappear to get to the clean cities through the clay materials. And this is what we have here. So please, as an engineer, I find it terribly disturbing to listen to this development just not taking into account the fat clay. I have trees that have grown three to four feet of years since I've been here, they're seventy, eighty feet long because the water stays with it. Not only the water, but the contaminants. My neighbor and I have built a little canal like field to water as quickly as we can down to Ford Brook, so it doesn't stay made in our land. And if you have a lot of wood under service, the material, your planning is, Chair.
I have one more question, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
So these conditions, who sets them and when? And why do you sign that?
The city council can attach conditions. Um, this body makes a recommendation, they will consider the conditions that I've drafted. They can amend those conditions tonight based on discussion and make a recommendation. Um, they could also table this meeting until next time. Um, and so we can look at, you know, some various things and then the city council.
How do we get, how do we table the meeting so that we as a group of neighbors have time to collect our thoughts on what conditions might be appropriate to recommend to the city council to recommend?
I think the, I think the biggest thing would be to, if the planning and zoning commission wants any additional facts, for instance, to have the city engineer review the, um, you know, parking lot layout and the drainage again, to be sure that it's still in satisfactory condition, those kinds of things. Um, yeah, whatever the commission recommends tonight, that's, that's.
Can you demand soil testing? Can you as the city council demand soil testing?
Uh, well, soil testing was done, so.
Yeah, a lot of.
Two thousand sixteen.
We never seen anything out there, and I'm home every day.
Pardon me?
I've been sitting in your home every day, and I'm right next door there.
No, not, it hasn't been, it hasn't been done in recent years. It was done when the, the ponds were put in.
And now that the old, the old tenant has left. Has anybody got a sample to see how much oil they dumped into the ground?
Okay, all right, well.
What monitoring system have you got set up to test the area periodically every month or every week to determine if there are problems?
This is what I'm.
Do you know?
We had time to collect some ideas on what kinds of conditions might be good to the neighbors that would be good. For example, we're on a dirt road, we all know how quickly those potholes develop and the more cars are getting sold, the more potholes are gonna build real fast. I don't know if the city wants to pay for that, I know you only come out once a year, usually it's one of the neighbors that just does it out of their own goodwill. Or maybe given one of those conditions, such as paying for a portion of paving the road or maintaining that section of the, for example, those kinds of conditions would be good for us neighbors to recollect on, is all I'm thinking. We didn't, we didn't know that was an option, I don't think any of us knew what really was going to be the case tonight. It's clear that we don't really have any legal rights to stop this. We're, we're going on, on what we said as, as a motion plea, I think, to the, the buyer and seller here. Uh, and I kind of, to you, just to consider, it sounds like there might be more than you bargained for to begin with, with the septic and drainage and, and just in general. I would, I would plead for a, a motion to postpone the meeting one month or whatever our options are, if that makes sense.
I, I think one of the things you're forgetting, engineers will be working on this. Uh, septic systems, I don't think you need to worry about, because that comes under the state of Minnesota and it, and it's gotta, it's gotta meet the code. If it don't meet the code, it'll be closed down, or they won't even get it.
It'd be closed down right now if that was the case.
Well, it, that could be.
I'm a plumber, I know.
I, I won't argue, but he's gonna have to have the right kind of septic system, it's probably gonna have to be a mountain system, I'm not sure what it's gonna be. I, I, I'm not a engineer. So the, so the thing is, there's all kinds of things that's being taken care of, our engineers will be looking at that, everybody will mo, will be monitoring this. Uh, as far as your, your, your stormwater ponds, they have to be cleaned every so many years. Uh, so there's all kinds of things that, uh, will, will have to take place here to keep, make this legal and, and, and he has to meet these, the criteria as we set up. If they don't meet these criterias, criterias, down it goes.
Are we saying we're not willing to postpone the vote and the meeting and the recommendation then?
They haven't discussed it at all.
You don't have nothing to do with it right now. You're here to express what you, your, your complaints or what you think, and we have to take that into consideration here, uh, in the decisions we make here.
Right, that's what I was asking, are you shutting me down and saying you're not gonna be willing to consider postponing?
I, I can't speak for anybody else. We have to make.
Can you speak for yourself, are you willing to postpone?
I'm, the, the, this committee has to make the decision on their own and it goes to the city council and the city council has to handle it from there. We do not make the final decisions.
Right, okay.
Tom, what about this variance? This, the changing under the variance up? On my property, I'm the last, uh, do I have any say in that?
You, you have a voice right here to planning zoning, make, make comment.
I'm against any variance turning the residential home and the property.
And when it comes to variances too, there's also a legal thing, uh, when a national variance, if you, if you put variance in the tech, uh, what's the legal thing you can do with it?
But can you provide some clarity again? Cause the, the variance is the distance from the existing property line to the existing home on the car sales. As a residential property, it was set up at eighty-nine point eight feet. When it's, when that house goes to, uh, part of this proposal is to convert the house to a office as well, so then the house becomes a commercial building. So the commercial building code currently says a hundred feet. So the ask is, can we get a variance of that ten feet? Because the house is gonna be eighty-nine or eight feet to the line. But this is not your property, this is on the existing property.
Right.
So it doesn't affect your property, nothing.
A hundred feet of commercial property. That's a big, big, big property.
Yep, it's moving too fast.
Commercial building there.
I don't see how it does.
Mr. Chair.
He's saying that the, from the commercial zone of the, the whole existing property, the house was already too close to where they were doing business in, in commercial zone.
No, 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 no.
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 Uh, Mr. Chair.
We're at a hundred feet, it's a rule, it's already eighty-nine.
Go ahead, planner.
Okay, when it was a, when it was rezoned to commercial, the house automatically became an interim use in the commercial zone. It's, the house's setback requirement is only twenty feet to the side lot line, so the house did not have an issue. What's at issue is we require a buffer yard between any commercial operation and residential use. So what we're saying is that's only eighty-nine point two feet away from the side lot line, not a hundred feet. That is no fault necessarily of the buyer's seat, it's not something he created. They're asking for a variance and variances can be given for setbacks or something that's not created by the property owner. Um, it's, it's like, it's a hardship situation. We call it practical, we call it practical difficulties.
I have another question for you.
Okay.
You said there's a thousand feet of additional paving, more or less for cars.
More or less, yeah.
What's the existing?
Um, we have about a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces, yeah.
What's the enough square footage?
I'm not sure exactly.
What's the increase amount?
The increased amount is less than a thousand square feet.
Well, is the existing forty by two hundred is only eight thousand, so the question comes up, are you gonna change the holding pond? Is that gonna be able to take this additional?
Yes, what I was saying before was, is the threshold to require changes to the holding pond is ten thousand square feet and he is not anywhere near that. So as long as we have the engineer look at that holding pond and we know that that holding pond or infiltration pond, whatever it's called, is doing its job, he is not required to amend that, so.
Again, it's going to be a question of whether that actual holding pond is letting with pollutants down into the groundwater and into our area. That's the real question.
Right.
And if it does, and we catch their wells, we know they have to.
So if the commission would like to direct this to the engineer for some input, yeah, we can certainly do that.
Will we get any insight into that or will we be left out of it?
No, no, we would like to include you on everything, yeah.
Because to me, it's a question of how much pollution is there and how much is gonna contribute. I have strong feelings about pollution and water.
Okay, all right. Well, I've just taken some good notes here and you're on, you're on the record.
It seems like the question is, cause I live, I'm in a, do you have a.
Give you a name and address, please.
Matt lives, five-four-three-six-hundred-and-ninety-nine. And his pond, when it rains a lot, it overflows and it's overflowed into my yard and across my driveway and into my slough area and then over to West Ford Brook, there happens all over.
Okay, so look at the map. Which lot are you, sir? Which lot are you, sir?
Jim, Jim.
Which, what is, which lot are you?
He's the right.
I don't know where your yard is.
The next one over.
This one?
Nope, nope.
Here?
That one. Yep.
This is Jim.
That's me, that's me.
The one to the right is Roy.
Yeah, where you're at right now is where I'm at.
That's you.
On our, to the north.
Okay. One of you.
That's Jim, he'll wait there.
Where the cul-de-sac is, that's Jim right there.
Right.
Right here.
That's Jim, okay, all right.
So in other words, what we've just been told is holding pond with its clay base, can't take the water efficiently and it's running off into some other person's lot. And now you're gonna add a thousand other square feet, even if it's less than ten thousand. If it's five thousand, you're adding twenty percent, twenty-five percent more.
Um, oh, Mr. Hill, you're, right now, we're just making assumptions, so I would suggest that we get some engineering input on the drainage situation.
His overflow into his lot is not an assumption. I'm sorry, as an engineer, I'm, I'm uncanny for engineering.
Okay.
Mr. Lynn.
Whoever your engineer is.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
I think the question is, it's, it seems like, um, I've lived there for fifteen years, so I, I mean, as we talked before, I, I take care of the cul-de-sac, just great and all that, but it's, it seems like if this is gonna happen, and we talk about the engineer, is the city engineer, are they gonna test the soils at just the car lot? Or would it be all of ours where the runoff happens? I think that's the question we're trying to get answered, if I'm not mistaken, from the neighbors here. And can we get the city to test all of them? Because it does, it runs from the car lot over to Jim's, his pond overflows into my yard, I used to have a garden there, it's too wet, it overflows my driveway into my slough area back past Lynn Cadlex and over to West Ford Brook. And so I think that's the question, can the city, is it just, can they do a test at the lot and the downline from the lot to see if there's a lot, how much contaminant? And just, that's what it seems like, and we haven't had a meeting about this or anything, but it seems like that's what the question is, just to see, maybe it isn't really happening even though we see things, but can the city do that as part of this? I, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but that's what it seems like to me.
And, and Chair?
I have another comment, which I need to be shared with everybody. Water is heavier than the oil. The oil from your parking lot floats in the top. As a result, it's gonna flow onto everybody else's land that's ghosted and there it's, the oil will be stopped. Like I said before, your engineering is really, really, you're polluting other people's land. And you're held legally liable for that.
The whole corner of that lot, the trees are all dead, you can see, looks like a rainbow, all slick on top of the pond. Next to it, every time we have a downpour, even when it isn't, it's, it's contaminated.
Which, which is not very good for us to see. I'm sorry.
So that's why I asked the question, is it possible to have the engineer do many boreings in our yards to see?
Well, it's being followed by many.
Well, I mean, just to do it and see, but as part of having a new car lot, since it is changing hands. Well, I mean, just to do it and see, but as part of having a new car lot since it is changing hands.
Ma'am, what's the-
You mean, so you have a condition to check, to check the soil? Yes, so add, add a condition?
Initially, then every year or two years or whatever.
Yes, ongoing testing?
Look, you can't, oh, get the WPA's.
So, I'm at a hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue, the I four seven seven. Um, my question is, is this like, a done deal? Is this something that's just going to be pushed on through? It, you know, I guess I want to know that.
No, it's not necessarily-
Because otherwise, what we have to say doesn't mean anything.
You're, you're, you're still like, you're-
Right, because our variance is, it went from like a hundred and fifteen cars to a hundred and fifteen cars, and it didn't go well. That's what we're trying to say. There's a lot of problems.
I've been there, a member of Planes Zone made a call here, I know exactly what you people are doing. Your recommendation goes to the city, and the city officials are the ones who put the file approval. Your recommendation can carry forth that there are areas here which our legal responsibilities are not being met. You must give to the mayor, whoever that person is, right there, right now. And you need to know that that is a legal limit that you may be facing by the lawyers. I didn't know my lawyers had these situations going on completely. I know we've had, Roy and I had times.
Well, Jim got his garage shot. They were firing guns over there and they shot his garage.
God, kidding.
The dumb they're doing dumb, the people are hiding in the circle down there, by your house.
Yes.
You know, I'm one, I, I don't care if people are shooting in your yard as long as they're safe in the water.
Right, but they, you need to sort of-
You know, but when you've got people willy-nilly from the cities coming out here shooting the hell out of anything, even if they think they can, because they're all over the country, and that's pretty much what we're going to have when they come out here, you know, I'm, I'm a safety guy. We're going to have people come that, that are going to be renting these plots who aren't from out here.
They don't know the rules.
They don't, they don't, they don't know safety, anything. They're going to be coming and going all the time. There's going to be giggles of them. I'm looking at safety for my family. And it seems like, don't give a crap about us because you're not on our side of town.
In your backyard, you'd be singing a different tune.
You know what, if, if we say I have a big billboard that says, hey, you guys want to get ahold of our city council? Here's your name, address, and story, and here's a map, go to their neighborhood, what would you guys say?
Mayor, do you want to make some of it?
I mean- I, I will say, this is the reason for a public hearing, so the neighbors can say their piece. That's why everybody was, was notified. It's the commission that makes recommendations, and hopefully they're taking into account all the things that are being brought up here. These are being brought up for the first time publicly. And, and the recommendation to delay, you know, that, the commission can make that. The council can also make that decision. We're not insensitive. And we're not saying that this is going to be crammed down anybody's throat. This is a chance to speak and be heard, and then collect the data. So you guys are bringing up valid information that I don't see in the report right now.
I have one other question. Now, you have to show your map of just our little neighborhood, but then you have all the houses that go all the way up to West Fordbrook Road and all the way down, but only those few people around this general area only got noticed. And I talked to people all the way down Old Viking, all the way down West Fordbrook Road, down Viking Boulevard, down Flurry Road, and tell those people knew a damn thing about this. And I'll tell you what, they were not happy about this, and knew nothing about it. And a lot of those people down Old Viking Boulevard had had problems on the break-ins.
Can we give more time to have a petition signed by everybody and pass out a petition?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a quick question. I just want to know, is this, is this property sold? Are you just going through, uh, uh, through the motions? Or have you, have you, what are you, I mean, has it been sold?
There's, there's a sign of purchase agreement.
Okay. I-
We're sensitive.
Basically, what, what we have to say means nothing.
I'd like to believe that you are sensitive. You said you are sensitive. I think I do believe that you are, that you, you do hear our cries, that you wouldn't necessarily want riffraff and drug, I mean, I think you probably think we're exaggerating. Really not. I stay up late. There's times where there's harsh parts in our policy, like one in the morning doing some strange, like, well, there's been really strange things, and I don't really get it. And I really didn't stop until- As soon as this was empty. It seems that people were coming up here realizing this was a really secure place, you just don't do a big drug deal, there weren't going to be any cops at the day and night. And like that kind of stuff, we're really not exaggerating. I do believe that you're sensitive to that, and I, that's why I was trying to say, can we postpone? If you say, can we postpone, you know, we can, we can put together a more intelligent list of things that we would like to have as conditions for the ongoing operation if we really don't have a say. Like you said, I think you also don't have a say here. Legally, they can buy the property. Legally, they can apply for the permit. Legally, you only have so many ways to reject it. It sounds like we can use conditions as a way to make it unusable or unenjoyable to purchase or unenjoyable to operate. And I'm just curious about how we can get time, just more time, as opposed to just pushing it through because-
Let me answer, let me answer a couple of things. One, there, there is a requirement on who gets notified when a property has requests for variance or interuse permit or conditional use permit. And so that typically is anybody that borders within that property by thirteen hundred and twenty feet. Thirty, thirty homes were notified this time. We've also given our staff the opportunity to, if they look at something and says, we believe this will affect a larger area, to expand that. So when the letters are sent out, they might say, I'm looking at this, and, and people that have a concern over drainage into Fordbrook, that live on the other side of Fordbrook might also appreciate a letter. So that's, that's an option we've given to our staff to evaluate. But the requirement is if you're within thirteen hundred and twenty feet, you are going to get notice on this. We also made sure that as a city, we put out a big blue sign in front of there, so anybody driving by could say, hey, something's going on in this property, I need to call the city and find out what it is. That's something we started a few years back, so that, because some of these things do affect people farther away, and they didn't get the letter. So we do try and make sure that sign's out there as soon as a public hearing is notified. So, um, that is part of the communication opportunity. We also, um, generally put it on the homepage of our website. I don't know if this one was noticed on there or not, but, I mean, that's generally there for residents to be able to follow that as well. We're looking at other ways of improving that communication going forward, but those are the things that are there right now. It is up to the commission to decide if what they've heard tonight, they can determine if they want to table this and keep the, or continue the public hearing to get more input, or close the public hearing and make a recommendation to council.
Can we ask the commission to come in on that right now? If they're willing to commit to postponing?
You can ask.
I mean, I got a question, Chair, is anybody else willing to commit to just postponing?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend we just let the commission discuss it. He can get some feedback, or they can get some feedback. Um, and then, it, it's not a decision, I don't think it should or could put anybody on the spot, so. Um, one comment I want to make is that we have been working with MINDOT and they have agreed to, um, put a paved apron in there where one ninety-ninth meets St. Francis Boulevard.
So, you know, that is a city responsibility, you should be calling it off.
You need to discuss it right now, so you're proposing now?
Yeah, no.
So, so Liz, the, the apron discussion, because I know that the residents didn't talk about that, but I know that's been another source of frustration, because that's what was talked a little bit about the last time on, there's some pretty significant potholes and you're trying to go from zero to sixty on a gravel road to an asphalt road, and so what's the plan there?
Right, so, MINDOT has agreed to pave that apron. I just spoke with her, or the gal that sort of coordinates that on Tuesday. She, I, it was explained to her, if you can look up here, you see how the right-of-way depth from the center line is more on the north side and lesser here? So I was asking her, well, how far do they come out? Do they go all the way out here? Or do they have to stay back, um, at this point? So, she had to check with the state engineers on that, um, but they are planning, um, to try to get that done yet this fall, so.
It's a, it's a twenty-twenty project.
They're just going to go out toward the car park entrance and then just going to be potholes where that asphalt meets the gravel.
Well, it, so it is, no, it's a public road that was approved as a gravel road. So, each house on this road generates ten trips a day. Um, that's how engineers calculate trips per day.
Right, now the car park, they are generating hundreds of trips a day, probably fifteen cars coming in.
Well, they're not going in and out all day.
So how far back?
I understand what you mean now.
How far back does the apron go? Do we know?
Well, there is no apron.
There's no apron now.
I know, but the, the design?
The proposed- No, we don't know if it will, how far it will come back. It's thirty-three feet to this point here. And it's a little farther to this point from the center line.
I have a comment as an engineer, I think it's only Lino Lakes, I pioneered one thing which was when it developed like a, this one, a rule, funny, along the entire strip, it would pull you up to a ton axle weight that that business would be using. So anytime we have to do that construction object that's on the north side here, we would have to put a ten ton axle from the highway all the way to their lot line, automatic. Why is it done in this city?
It's never been, uh, a requirement. Pardon me?
We did, Lino Lakes is part of their approval.
Lino Lakes, some cities do, some cities don't.
Well, intelligent thing is, once you build a road to the correct capacity, people won't have problems here.
I'm just happy to hear you built, you built a couple of years ago, so it isn't all mud anymore.
Well, that's true, but you need so much class five on there before it becomes a problem. Look at my car.
Mr.- Doctorman? Do we want to go with the findings, facts that you had before or after we close it?
I don't think we need to even go through detailed findings now unless you want to. I think we need to start a general conversation about how you'd like to respond to the public, and whether or not you would like to delay the, or continue rather, the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. When you talk to MINDOT, the, the right-of-way to the north of a hundred and ninety-ninth, what's the chance that they're going to want that right-of-way all the way down? How, how did that get so disparate?
Uh, that's because you can only ask for or take right-of-way when a subdivision occurs. So, I'm guessing this likely was subdivided at a later date. If we had, if this was part of a subdivision request, we would absolutely be requiring or asking for additional right-of-way.
At what, twenty-five feet?
Um, I don't know how much more that is, but-
Fifteen feet for us, President, I thought it was twenty-five feet for the-
No, it's thirty-three feet from the center line, from the center line.
For the truck highway is more, it's fifty feet.
No, not for St. Francis Boulevard as it is, no.
Truck highway forty-seven is not a highway?
It is a highway, but-
And it's not a fifty-foot either side of the south?
No.
It's old.
It's old, yeah. Part, you know, parts of it may be wider than that and parts are not, like, just as is evidenced here. So... Yeah, um... Anyway, Mr. Chair, so, you, let's have the commission discuss.
Okay, uh-
So, do you want to put it right, additional above?
Let that be appreciated. Uh, the commission here, what's our, what's our plan, what we should do with this? What, our, our biggest, the biggest concern I've got, uh, of everything, is about the engineering for the, uh, the water runoff. If the holding pond is bigger than-
Yeah, it seems like the right thing to do, my opinion is, we need to have the engineer out there and look at it. It feels like, if we're really, if we get a moderate rain and it blows through all these guys' yards, then, I don't know if the design is right, or if the thing is plugged, or what, but that, that feels like a problem. So we, I, you know, I would propose we, at a minimum, have, if it's our engineer or who's ever supposed to design these things, come and look at it and calculate, here's a square foot, here's what the hundred-year rainfall is, here's how deep the pond is, and it's either functional or not, so we at least have assessment that it's working correctly. Cause it doesn't, I mean, they're not just here because it's working perfectly, right? So, it doesn't feel like it's working right.
Point of clarification, it's not all of ours, it's all on the south side of the world.
Yeah, so just, help, I mean, help me understand, because when I look at this thing, right, isn't the, the holding pond is like right here, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So then it goes into Jim's, Jim Day over there is the next property down, you're looking at that over here. So this is Jim Day, this is Matt's.
And you're Jim, right?
Yes, that's that Jim, yes.
That's Jim.
There's two Jims here.
It's going from here right across the drain.
It goes right across this way, right?
Yep. So not over my driveway, it's my yard over my driveway, and then back.
And then it eventually gets into this?
Nineteen thirty, three times, goes all through all of this, and on the other side of forty-seven.
So-
There it is, a few feet below the ground, from nineteen thirty, we have no, you just dig them up, but sometimes you're here.
Yeah, and then with that, the drain title is there. I'm on the north side of a hundred and ninety-nine.
You're, you're up here, right?
Yeah. And I get, I have oil down this swamp down there next to the, the thermal.
You have oil where? Here?
Right there.
So how does the water come from here across here and get up there and here?
Well, it's like, uh, well, it's all down here.
It goes that way, it goes that way.
Yes, it's not coming to the- Yes, in fact, I've got a couple of-
Because this, this is a property, then there's Jim's, and this is Jim's pond.
Yep.
And it goes into there, and then across, this isn't a pond in my property, it's just really low, if I could make it a pond. That's where it flows, but it also into here, into the cul-de-sac here, where I have my drain, that's where it sits, and that's where in the last, and I don't know if, I'm not an engineer, but in the last ten years, all those trees have died, right here. And that's, because when it flows, it flows in here and it kind of goes both ways, but this, there's a, there's a culvert obviously underneath my driveway and it goes here, but most of it goes here and goes around the, our, between us and Cadlex, this slough, and that's where it goes around like this, back into Fordbrook.
Okay.
I can't really speak for Roy's on the north side, because I'm not sure. It doesn't go, there's no culvert that puts it across, I don't think.
You know, it's confusing, because there's all those, the drain titles are, and I have these little volcanoes-
I don't know that part of it, I'm just saying what happens on our side, that's basically what I'm-
The first thing I would propose is-
For top runoff, it's all, if you do top auger, different elevation from, from the highway, it's just a steady, just the ground itself is a steady drop through mine over the lenses.
Right.
And it levels out like from lenses to the, uh, brick. You know, but, but it's all downhill.
Yeah, we're at the bottom basically.
You know, we're running across the top of the ground before it gets to the drain tiles, and it's clay. So, it runs off.
So you're asking, my opinion, I believe we should ask the engineer to assess that, because it feels like it's a, it's, we have a water problem that we need to review.
Sounds like the holding pond is not handling.
I don't know.
According to what they're saying, the holding pond is not handling.
I have a question for you, gentlemen.
Yep.
You say it's designed, and how is it designed for runoff? Is it designed for holding?
I'm saying I don't know.
Then the effort would go from there.
Yeah, I'm saying I don't know. I'm saying that we need to have either the city engineer or the person that knows how these things should be designed, assess, here's the size of the parking lot, here's the size of the pond, and typically, I'm guessing they use some amount of rainfall to see how much this pond should hold, and is the thing designed right?
Where does the actual flow supposed to go, the water itself?
It eventually goes down Ford, they don't, they don't know, that's why.
Yeah, but that's the point. The designer has not a full system- Yeah, but that's the point, the designer has not a pour system with clay beneath it, and therefore the clay gets saturated and doesn't move, so as a result, then it flows downhill.
Hey, hey, Jim.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, they don't know, they're just, they're recommending bodies, so we could say this all night, and they're not gonna have an answer to that. They just need to take the information, and they're gonna talk to say, we need to get the city engineer whatever it costs.
From the same engineer?
Yeah, that I don't know.
You think more of the same person that designed it?
I guess.
Just let them discuss it, that's, that's what they need to do.
Yeah.
Fucking engineering firm. That's what they need to do, to discuss it.
Find somebody who knows what.
Okay.
It's a fair one, right? Okay. So I, I would recommend that, the, the second piece that, at least, I would like to understand is, how far, how big of an apron is this thing? Can we get from the state, and do we need to, do we need to add on to it, or what does that number look like? 'Cause if it's, it would seem crazy to me that we wouldn't extend that thing past that drive.
It would be crazy.
I mean, they're out there, they're out there with the trucks, right?
Mm-hmm, it, yeah, we did talk about it with the city council and, um, you know, there, there was, were pros and cons both ways. But, you know, in reality, we do have, what, seven or eight properties here that share this public road. So the question is, how do we go about the improvement? Do we improve all of it, do we improve part of it? Um, do we assess, do we, you know, what, how is this done, does the city pay for it?
Right.
There's all sorts of different options, and so we need to talk about that too. And, and as it relates to the drainage, there's also multiple things going on with the drainage on private property, the drainage on the public road, and then the drainage on this particular site.
And the drainage from the highway, 'cause there's actually a culvert that goes underneath the parking lot, the car lot.
Yes.
Into their holding pond, that drains the, drains highway forty-seven.
I can, yes. I can say with a hundred percent certainty that the water coming under the road, under, under forty-seven was considered, there were actual stormwater calculations done in two thousand sixteen. So the question is, the whole intent then was to handle the new parking lot that was installed, um, on the property or paved, okay? So the question now, obviously, we'll get the engineer to look at this and make a recommendation as to how to address some of these concerns.
Which way is the flow on the hot end of the highway?
Um, it comes from the east, goes under forty-seven, right into the Burns Auto Lot.
It also goes underneath one hundred ninety-ninth.
From the north?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause it's all gone toward the southwest, kind of.
And underneath the parking lot, and, and, uh, Jim Day is back here.
Right. Right, right. So, um, yeah, so that is one main concern, yeah, the road paving.
I think the, the second concern I would, the, the second thing I'd like to understand is, how, how do we get the road past that? And what is the cost, and if it's an upgrade, is this where the, you know, 'cause you could pave the whole thing and say, hey, here's what it's gonna cost, do you guys want a paved road there? Do you wanna spend some money to do that, because it's, the city can't afford it, or the city's gonna kick in X amount? I don't know what that looks like, but while they're out there, it seems like we should at least get it past that driveway.
You should give it to the two commercial properties.
And it's like, and then is it, does the city kick in a piece, and does the residents kick in a piece, 'cause it's gonna be an upgrade for you guys as well? I don't know what the costs are, but that's, we can potentially find that out. And then the third thing that I would like to understand is, like, we've heard about, you know, light pollution, so do we, what, what's the list that we wanna consider with these guys' input that says? It sounds like there's a lot of police reports, I'm sure this business owner is probably eyes wide open right now as well. I mean, when we first looked at this, the buildings look pretty shoddy today, they're looking to be a nice upgrade from what they are today. He obviously wants it to be a successful operation, 'cause he's investing money and capital in this thing, so what is, what is, what's right there in terms of what do we wanna do from a hours of operation, from a safety standpoint? To get this to be successful for the residents and for the business owner? 'Cause he obviously doesn't want this thing to fail either, 'cause it's his money, um, and we want the residents to not, they know what they have today, that's why they're all here, they don't like it. And there's been some issues with it, so if it's oil runoff, we can obviously write that into the, uh, into the, uh, IUP or the conditional use permit, or interim use permit. If it's other actions on amount of hours, lights, we can write that in, and then we can hold them accountable to what's in that IUP, and the residents are gonna know.
What was the original plan for the oil flowing down the water, what you were gonna do with it?
Those are like, I mean, that's, I'm not gonna say I don't know, but I've no, I'm pretty sure we probably didn't know that, right?
We need to skew it off, or get somewhere, pick it off the water, so it doesn't pollute downstream.
But we, we can tell you, and at least from an operation standpoint, this used to be more than just a car lot. It used to be fixed cars, change oil, the new proposal is, there's none of that, there's not gonna be repairing cars there, um, it's gonna be an open car lot. So I'm not saying those issues go away, because if the car's leaking oil, you still have that, but it's not a day-to-day oil change place like it was in the past. Ma'am, you had a question?
Well, you just, and, well, you just basically touched on what I was gonna say. I mean, cars leak oil, they, they gas and leak, you know, it's not gonna go away, it won't, it'll get better.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna go away.
I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying it's not gonna be a, it's not like a oil change place, yeah.
Let's, let's go on here, uh, what are we, uh, what are we gonna recommend here as planning and zoning, and what's our recommendation? 'Cause I think the big issue is still the engineering on the pond, the runoff and the water.
So let's continue the open, just, is it the open discussion? Trying to get my terminology right here, the open means.
Continue the public hearing.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing and get some additional data for us and for the residents on, what is the design of this holding pond? Is it, is, uh, what are the design requirements, and is it designed correctly? And get that feedback. I'd also like a recommendation to understand what it's gonna take to get the road paved at least past that driveway, and potentially up to the next commercial property there. And what's the likelihood that, what's that cost, and how do we split that out, and what's fair?
Um, I have one more question.
We have, wait a minute.
So let's, uh, let me finish that, and then the third piece is, um, as a, as a residence, I, we would like your input on, what do you guys see from, uh, from a conditional use permit standpoint? And then, I'm not gonna guarantee that everything can be met, but we would like to see what your list is, and then see what, how it fits into what are requirements, or what the zoning current, or zoning requirements are.
Is there any way to get criminal activity condition put into that special use permit? I mean, there's been a lot of police reports up there.
I, I have planners, so I've got at least twenty-six, twenty-eight items listed here, so there's more we could add to that.
Robert, were you saying?
Under condition.
Criminal activity, you know, it's.
Oh, so, uh, at this time, we have a motion on the floor, somebody would like to make a second, this commissioner Alders made this motion.
Hang on there. I think you wanna make sure you got all the can, things that you want, before you have another continuation of public hearing, there's three items there. There's more than that listed by the residents tonight, so you wanna make sure that if you're asking for additional information, get it all.
Right.
So you don't have to continue this again. Because there's a question on the septic, and you're adding twenty-four offices, and you've got three bathrooms, but what's the volume usage there? What's the condition of the septic that, that exists? I think, you know, that came up as a critical thing tonight. Obviously, wanna know the, the drain tile situation, 'cause truly, we're running from Joe Greensfield over to this, and, you know, if it's coming out, um, you know, Mister, Mister Johnson's corner there. He's bubbling out drain tiles on the north side of one hundred ninety-ninth, we, we need to make sure the engineer is addressing all of the drainage as well. And then we talked, with Liz, we talked about with the state, we're gonna find out who their contractor was, and get an estimate from them, if they're gonna do the apron. Are they going back to the, the right-of-way to the north, or the right-of-way to the south? And if they're going to right-of-way to the north, how much more would it cost to go to the commercial drywads? I think those are important things, um.
And the variance.
Variants haven't been discussed here even tonight. There was, there was a comment that somebody had made, there's a garage floor drain and a bathroom piped into the drain tile systems. I think that certainly needs to be verified, if that was corrected over the years or not. But if we do have something draining into a drain tile, um, that has to be remedied, but it needs to be verified. If it's not being done anymore, we need to know that too, so we put that to rest. Um, that was brought up, so some discussion about, you know, testing soils now, so you have a known condition before going further. 'Cause if you're gonna put a condition on there that the soils can't be contaminated, you have to have a known condition now, so what's your recommendation on that? Obviously, we do have lighting standards, um, I've been complaining about the lighting to Liz for years. And we have standards here, we have to make sure we're upholding the standards, we, we also agree with Tark's kind of concerns. We moved out here to see stars, not have our lights, our bedrooms lit up and moving lights. There is a question here, um, if there are non-compliance with the IUP, can the city shut it down absolutely? The IUP conditions.
We've gotten non-compliance multiple times over the past few years.
And, and, uh, if there was a non-compliance with an IUP, was an IUP before CUP, Liz?
CUP.
Uh, you, in, in two thousand sixteen, it was an IUP also.
Okay. It should've been addressed, because if the city doesn't have, right in the conditions of, you know, use permit, as you apply to the conditions, or the city can withdraw the IUP. The, the conditions aren't in there right now, but, you know, we have to see on the retention pond, if there is sediment and sludge in the bottom retention pond, is that the property owner's responsibility or the city's?
Probably not.
Soil testing, as you said, it was done in two thousand sixteen, but we don't know in the last four years since the previous tenant, um, if there's been any soil testing. So I think that should be considered one of the things you wanna research before you continue here.
Um, so what are the motions, pardon me?
Is this what he's saying, all part of the motion?
No.
No, I'm asking the commission to consider that, 'cause that's what the residents brought up, if we're gonna continue it, those are the things they want answered.
Could we clarify what, uh, items were put on the motion? So, so far, we have the ponding and drainage issue, um, the engineer's review, basically, the road paving issue, the lighting issue, the police reports, um, and the hours of operation, certainly. Um, we can get history on police reports, you know, the problem is, is if these thefts are coming, you know, if, if they're happening on other properties, and we can't, the police can't prove, you know, where this is originating. Or if, or if the auto sales themselves are, you know, it's, it's a tough deal, so that is, that's a hard thing, but the first thing is to collect the facts. Um, we have, the septic is not for the commission to decide, they will not receive a building permit if the septic is not in compliance. That is for your building official to determine. We have a condition in here that a septic system compliance inspection is required, so we're good there. Um, we require that all the buildings continue to be owned by one party or a single entity. Um, as far as the variance goes, uh, the, you know, is the existing vegetation between the house and the west property line adequate? Like I said, there will be, that driveway in front of the home is planned to be removed to keep the cars away from the residential side. Um, so there would just be the one, you know, the two access points on the one ninety-ninth, and kind of this U, you know, U-shaped, um, traffic pattern. So, and I think that would, that is a good idea. Anyway, so the ten-point-two-foot variance, we have variance criteria that we can go through, um, or that we routinely go through when we have a variance request. What else?
I've got two questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, was there any note of, uh, did you note anything along the lines of having the bid done for the entire road to see what it would be to be assessed? For the residents to pick it up, or the city and the residents to, um, look into having it paved? I don't know if that was on the list. And then, uh, the other thing that I note here was checking the lining of the infiltration basin to make sure that it is correctly, um, done.
Yes, we know exactly what went in there, that was monitored by the city engineer when it was built, so we'll be able to answer that question once we talk to him. And so the intent is always to direct from that parking lot, or any parking lot that's constructed, direct that water that does have residue from oil and gas or whatever to that pond. Which fil- filters out those chemicals, um, so we'll ensure that that's working properly, um.
Liz, Liz, can I bring up one thing that Mr. Hill brought up?
Sure.
Um, generally, retention ponds are there for sediments to drop out, and the cleaner wire runs off in the overflow drain.
Right.
But the question he brought up was if the oil floating on top, if the oil stays on top of that water, a typical retention pond isn't gonna work, you're gonna need something that, that, um, is able to filter out any loading chemicals.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Can we look right now, and maybe the water that's spilled out of that forty-nine lot?
Since it's, since it's relevant to the, the inquiry about the paved road, and, and I don't need a survey of us or anything, I personally don't want to pave road. The point is, we don't want ten, twenty, forty, fifty cars during the day, boom, 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 on the, before the gravel meets the. Hey, that's, that's the problem, not that it's not a paved road, but that there's more cars than were ever intended to use it.
I like my dirt road.
I also.
Let's, let's go on, back to planning and zoning here, what, what direction we're going?
Well, just to clarify about the road, it is a public road, Mindot will not allow direct access onto the highway. So we have to, by law, give this property owner access onto one ninety-ninth. It is zoned commercially. If he meets the requirements, he's meeting parking requirements, he's meeting, you know, auto sales are allowed in that district, so we do have some limitations. Um, but yes, we can certainly address the condition of the road. And if you don't necessarily want it to go all the way, you know, it doesn't have to. Go ahead, Mr. Chair, were you?
Okay.
So, did we, so we wanna include, Jeff made some fair comments on, um, I believe it was soil testing.
Right.
We clarified on septic that that's a state requirement, not necessarily a city requirement.
Not a city decision, right.
And do you have a list of the other?
Lighting.
Lighting we've talked about?
So we can get details from the property owner or the applicant on lighting, um.
Current, another question, quick, before you move on to another thing, the soil testing, is that something that can only be done on this property because of what we're currently in? Um, because people in this conversation had asked about on their properties, that would be, that would be a fee on them, right?
Well, that's, that's the challenge, is because he, he's just coming into the picture, it's not his responsibility to correct necessarily past issues. Although we have to somehow address that.
Yep.
So that is a challenge, yes, of who pays for what, and whether we, you know, how, how it gets done, I guess.
Should we set the baseline?
My question was.
Set the baseline on this parking lot?
And that's where I, understanding that they have questions further down the road, but the, the, the soil testing seems like it should be on that property owner to prove it then, 'cause it, we can't, where do you stop? Because it, we can't, where do you stop? So that's why I was asking. Who's, where are we doing the soil testings? Is it going to be just on this property?
Well, we'll get a recommendation with the city engineer after kind of, after I tell him what the drainage concerns are. We'll just get a recommendation kind of on everything in that regard and see what, what we can do, what our options might be there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So then the question on, to, I know we're not volunteering tests in the neighborhood, but looking at a baseline for future concerns. The concern I would have with the residents that have brought up the drain tiles, if there truly are a series of drain tiles here that are coming up on other people's properties, maybe this drainage pond will take care of that. But I think we at least need to know where the drain tiles are coming from. So that if downstream toward closer to the brook, things are bubbling up in people's yards, we should know, is that emanating from this spot or from somewhere else? So I think the drain tile mapping would be important here.
Are you getting else, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess I'm wondering, one of the comments I see on this, the Ford Garden Peterson, the old grading plan, it's showing two septic systems. Is that still there, the two S field?
Watson, do you know where these septic fields are currently or not?
It's close to where you have them.
This is the one for the north building? And there's one for the house?
Yes.
Although I believe it's in the front though.
Yeah, it's in the front. I think one of the cells said the home was just a temporary provisional or future.
Okay.
Something about the third site needed to be identified, I think in 2016.
Right, right. And then this building has no septic now. So that would have to be investigated and designed if possible. I know they are allowed to go through a pond with a pipe if, for instance, they could put a drain field up here.
Okay, that was my question. I was wondering if there was an existing field for that building or not.
No, not the south building.
There's no building, bathroom in it at this time?
Right.
Does the other one have a septic?
Pardon me?
Yeah, the building?
Yes, the north building has the septic here.
Really? And you better have that checked out and see if it's really got one.
You said the pipe is going to go under the pond?
A septic pipe, yep, under state law, can go through a pond, yes. Under filtration basin.
What type of joints do you have?
Pardon me?
What type of joints are you going to use?
I don't, I don't have the details, sir. I'm not a septic designer.
Every joint except those are permanently sealed leak. We have five gallons of sink flow from void into our design for pipes. Unless that's a sealed pipe, including through the people yet.
Whoever, whoever the septic designer is, he's going to design that. So it's going to be legal.
Right, it'll have to be meet state requirements. We don't need to discuss it.
Okay, now we, we have a motion on the floor. We got everything included in that motion now.
Anything else you want to address? How about landscaping? How about the variance? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, I think what we added in the motion, and then we need to come back to the, because you have several items that we need to consider as we go through this, right, Liz?
Correct.
So I think that would be in addition to the stated items in your packet here.
Okay. So he's got to change the facade, for instance, on the north building to meet the code. Do you feel that there's adequate landscaping between the house and the western property line? I mean, there's a, there's a row of trees. Let's see, go back to the, are these like spruce trees here?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
On their side.
Yeah, over here. And then this is just some like natural growth or what?
Vine trees on their side and popple trees on the by side.
Okay.
Right down the path. Until you get right there is where it stops.
Kind of open here?
And the rest is all natural.
It's all open where you're at.
The rest is just block cellars and the old trash trees.
Yeah, willows.
That whole, that whole, and they're all dying.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll take the city engineer out to the site. We can talk about all these things. And so the, in November, it would be the fourth.
Second to the meeting.
Pardon me?
Please let me get a second to the meeting.
Well, I understand. I'm just trying to figure out when the next meeting is. November 24th is our next planning and zoning. So we would, the motion would be to continue till the next meeting?
We need, we need a second to this motion then, to continue this till the November 24th. Somebody like a second? I'll, I'll make the second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the votes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried.
And is there a copy of the police reports that can pay for? Oh, thank you, okay. Thanks for coming, everyone.
Thank you, guys, gals. Appreciate it. So just to say, just so, I checked the records. Everything, it's in that photo on the left. Those people are all notified by mail.
Right.
So every one of those addresses has been notified by mail of this hearing tonight. And the information that they referred to, there's, there's 28 conditions or things that they would be addressing tonight. That is part of our packet. So that's available from the city. If you want to review what we discussed tonight and what they were going to discuss tonight. That's all part of the packet. So that's public information.
Look on the website for that.
And so the sign will stay up in front. The blue sign will stay up because it's still a continuing discussion.
Most of the people that I talked to, you know, when they got this letter, really didn't explain a whole lot to them. Especially the one thing that they were really concerned about was the way that it was going to be, have all kinds of different offices in there for a lot of different dealers. That was their main concern, everyone, that wasn't on this letter.
So what you should do is if, if you see a sign or if you get a letter and you don't understand it, you know, it's impossible for us to put all the details in there. So just to call it.
I mean, that's a really important detail.
Well, it's whether, it doesn't matter if it's one office, 24 offices, you know, so we're dealing with, I mean, there's a difference here.
I mean, as I say, it's a, a trailer, it's under an office building. I mean, that's, I do like.
No, but you know what size, you know what size the buildings are. That's my point, is what I mean. We, we're not going to.
But I mean, that's one dealership to 20.
Right, so just ask questions, but we can't.
But you know, a lot of your, you're talking to a lot of candidates on that whole area. And then they read it and they're saying, well, that doesn't sound so bad. Until you start reading it, you're going, oh.
Well, in fairness to the planning and zoning city officials, we need to come here to get the exact ideas. You can't get them on a sheet, you'll be confused and burdened. So when I was on the planning and zoning, we come to the meetings and then you can ask your questions, get your mindset correctly on these folks who are doing a pretty good job. Uh, thank you for your time, by the way.
Okay. We appreciate your time coming too. Because it's exactly how it's supposed to work, a public hearing.
Right.
People get the notice, do their research, and come and speak their piece.
We appreciate the passion, everybody. We appreciate that. Yeah, we appreciate it. So we'll continue it for the next meeting.
We've got another, another item on the.
We don't get a lot of people here, so we're going to.
Yeah. When we walked in, we thought it was going to be good.
Liz, are we going to cover this number two item?
Yes.
Hurry up.
Because when you looked at this originally last month? Yeah. There was nobody else here. It wasn't a public hearing. I don't think they ever noticed. Oh, you must have, it was for us to comment on. It was, it wasn't publicly noticed yet. Oh, you think that's okay? So now, when do you vote? When do you vote? Uh, towards the end of December. Oh, so you're, so you're not taking that, you're not going to be on this? No, I'm going to be putting in my notice here probably in the next meeting.
That's more, we got another item here we got to cover.
The next meeting probably will be my last. We don't have one in December either, please. I'm going to be gone most of December, so. I don't think we've had one in December since, in the 15 years I've been at.
We're discussing ordinance 2028-04 regarding on-street parking and snow removal. Mayor, stop, what do you want?
Speaker, as I stated in the memo, we are just trying to clarify our on-street parking and snow removal requirements as we're coming on the winter season. It was an issue that's been raised by the council in previous months. So, you know, the text in black is what was existing and obviously what I've added and deleted. So we want to, well, first of all, it is against the law to push snow across a road or leave piles in the, alongside the road and in the ditches. So this is clarifying that requirement. We also have on-street parking requirements that prohibit parking from the 15th of November to the first day of April. And just kind of some language clarification. You know, what, you know, I didn't, accessory unit to me doesn't mean much. So and we're talking about prohibiting any on-street parking after the 15th of November through April 1st at 9:11 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. We do not allow any parking on-street for more than 24 hours. So people cannot leave boats, trailers, campers or vehicles just sitting for long periods of time. And they cannot be immobile. They can't be unlicensed or inoperable. No vehicle can be parked or permitted to stand, block sidewalks, trails, crosswalks, driveways, mailboxes. And then one thing that is a challenge now then is the parking of semi-tractors and trailers on residential property. So you have to have five acres to ask for an interim use permit to allow parking of a large vehicle over 20,000 pounds or a class four rating or higher. So that would be any three axle, six-wheeled vehicle, anything bigger. And we have had that prohibition for parking since 1993. We're just clarifying, you know, making the language a little easier to understand. And then added item F on page two, the city council may by resolution designate streets, blocks, alleys or portions thereof as no parking zones, fire lanes, or limited parking zones. Between five minutes and three hours.
Yeah, my pages are all over.
Yeah, my pages are.
Mine is all mixed up too.
Mine is jacked up a little bit, yeah.
It's like, all right. Yeah, there was just two pages there for the.
My bad.
Front side and back side.
It was election week this week.
That's a very good.
Last month has been chaos.
Yeah, did you share what the turnout was?
88% turnout for now then, for the election.
Wow, wow.
The most ever record. That's awesome. So I feel the language is fairly straightforward unless anybody sees anything that stands out as being confusing. But it's unlawful for any person to park on the boulevards, right-of-way, ditches after two inches or more of snow has accumulated. And then it is unlawful to obstruct any roadway or deposit snow or ice thereon by plowing, snowblowing, or shoveling snow or ice, removed from private property onto public streets, right-of-way, or ditches. If people leave snow parked alongside the road, you know, it ices up, the plow blade will hit that and actually throw the plow off kilter. It's, it's amazing how hard that ice can be. And a lot of people don't know that. So it is, this is subject to our administrative enforcement provisions. So we would have a warning letter and then an official notice and then a citation. And the Anoka County sheriffs are authorized to tow vehicles at the request of the Public Works crew. And so in your letter was an example, or in your packet was an example letter that would go out as the first notice. So we call it our potential city code violation. We're, we're trying not to be accusatory, but we're trying to educate people on the, on the regulations. So they can have the chance to, A, either know whether or not they're violating an ordinance regulation and then have the opportunity to correct it. So if need be, I would go out there and either look or explain things. Most of the time, the intent is to send this letter and to get a call back from the individual. So I know they received it or know they understand it. So I think what, I'm not sure where the mayor went, but what we had spoken about before was, you know, having the Public Works guys when they're out plowing to make, make notes where they're seeing people either parking or pushing snow and then let the city clerk know about it. Any thoughts on that whole matter?
Looks to me like it's pretty complete.
I think everything's good. From what I can tell. Okay. Yeah, it was fairly straightforward. I thought, it was not new and not recreating the real, really.
Think you're, think you're going to get one of these letters, Kelly?
Of course I will. Because, yeah, Dave's going to leave me in charge of that. Sure.
Okay, then, I should take care of that then.
So this is discussion. We'll have to, we'll send it to council. This does not need a public hearing. This is part of the city code, not the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So we will send that to council next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's nothing else? We're ready for the last motion. Here's not awake.
He's not awake, is he? A motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Every time I tried to talk tonight, somebody would interrupt you. It was a very unruly bunch of people at this.
Some of them wrote signs, please.
I hope.
I, oh, I will second the motion, yes.
Commissioner Burrow seconded it? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
We missed it, we turned.
I, I caught that.
Do you have any thoughts on that ordinance, code ordinance, Sheriff?